So.
Thank you.
No, I think you need to mute yours.
Okay.
It says that your audio is on. I think we're good now.
Is it better?
No.
Okay. And can they hear us?
Yeah, it comes through there.
Okay. Just asking. People out consume land. Mark, you know Laura's coming?
I do not know.
Oh, there she is.
She is, yes, I do.
She can find her way through.
Is she on? Is she on? Oh, it's her. Oh.
Are you open with that chair? Seven o'clock.
I got the smart job over there. You know, things just don't go.
No.
Okay, thanks for all the planning board meeting. Uh, the board's speaking, um, for the roll call. Mary?
Yeah.
Peter.
Peter.
Who would you have?
Bill Quick is here.
Chris is here.
Chris Olney, Laura Tenny.
Laura here.
Um, Sarah has a conflict, um, so she is not. Uh, first is correspondence, and I think we've received two from Marie. Yvonney, um, I didn't have a chance to read the one from today.
Yes.
Um, but we received one on Friday. Um. All right, we'll go into our approval network plan. Um, we'll do, we're gonna reverse and do, um, 239 Summer Street first.
Great. Thank you, ma'am chair. My name is Tom Sax, I'm an engineer with Hinkart Associates. I'll be representing Tom Doncic in his request for an A and R. For you, you see, we have our A and R plan. We just highlighted it up a little bit for you all. Um, in blue, you can see our proposed lot lines. Uh, we have one lot here to the north and then one lot here to the south. And what we're proposing to do is we're in green here is an existing lot line. And we're basically, this lot is non-conforming already. And the lot line is right next to the building. So we're requesting that we move the lot line to make it more of a conforming lot and give the property a little bit more of a yard space. Pretty cut and dry, any questions?
Anyone have any questions from the board?
Is that the full intent though, just to give yourself?
Yes, yes.
Base on the back of the building?
It's already an existing non-conforming lot, and we're just altering the lot lines so that there's some type of yard space.
No impact on the adjacent lot at all?
No. Nope.
Is it non-conforming due to size and frontage?
Yeah, size, we don't have much area. It's still not conforming to area, but, uh, frontage is the other non-conforming factor. But we're not, we're not altering anything in this area, it's just the rear of the lot.
So no construction, no road realignment, no disturbance of any sort? They're literally just changing the lot line?
Yep, they just have a common drive and that's it.
Anyone from the public, um, here for street one, this A and R? Anyone from the board have other questions?
I mean, something with the house on both lots.
Yes, um, there's a large one in the back here. Lot, and then on this lot, you have the smaller one here. So you can see how the property line is right up against it.
Is there any, um?
No.
On a finding system.
You go for that.
That you endorse the formate. If they're not affecting the frontage or access to the property.
What was that?
The district.
I believe so.
Well, we endorse the plans a bit by Hancock and Associates. And, um, the plan of land. Were the trustees of Anne Dodge Revocable Trust, the 239 Summer dated 1/22/25. And I note that the, uh, the plan does state that the planning board endorsement does not certify compliance if it's only by law.
Third second?
No, it's already been decided, okay.
Excuse me, there is one, um, we did make one edit to the references in the deed book, so the new date of the plan is 2/6/25.
Oh, okay.
So we did have to add one reference from the deed book. So that's the only change we have made.
Someone made it on?
I amended to the date of 2/26/25.
2/6/25.
2/6/25.
Okay.
Any discussion? Will we take a vote? Uh, Laura?
Yes.
Yes.
I vote yes.
I vote yes, Corey, yes.
Yes.
Thank you, um, Mark has yet to give my law, so.
I should get some updated, I should get some updated paper copies as well.
Of course, yep, I can do that. Right, thank you.
Uh, agenda is the local lot required for Chief Board LLC 30 and 34 times. And I think nothing can be.
I'm not prepared to use you as something, not if I say.
Um, we just need to capture that you can see, but we need to see it plenty.
I think it's a clutching goal. Yeah, of course. Hope you guys are hand crying.
No, but I thought I was putting forward a three lot, a whole lot in our plan. I became involved in the property because long ago in Faraway, I worked for Bill Hatchet, the landscaper. After he passed and his sister sold the house, and to sell the house, she contacted, that's how I became involved in the 35th Street property, which is the Hatchet House. It had been my intention to keep the Hatchet House on the corner of Deer Hill and Heinz Street, the big white one. And they had two extension lots. Formas off to the side, but after the community. Uh, I always get this wrong. After the community. How's the overlay district? Yeah, that overlay district, thank you. Um, got passed. It became clear that I could do up to 10 lots, because I also ended up buying the 35th Street lot.
And lots.
Ten lots?
Ten units.
Ten units. Ten units, I've bought that ten units. Yes. Because I had bought the adjacent property, 35th Street. Thirty-four. Oh, thirty, you were, thirty-fourth Street. This plan was meant, that's before you, was meant to represent three formas, single family on Pine Street, consistent with the existing look and fill of the place, and two duplexes under the community lot at our back. But the reality is, I guess I'm short frontier because I thought I could use the community prime slot, but I'm informed by Mark that it has to be the underlying zoning. So I'll have to bring this back to you with modification to bring this lot up to, uh, zoning that exists in the residency.
So you're requesting an extension, because your plan was filed on February 10th. And so your 21 days would expire on the 3rd of March. So are you requesting an extension of this time?
Sounds like he's withdrawing it on a recent anywhere.
Oh, okay, is that what you'd like to do?
No, because I'm already here, because I only heard about this from Haka Bono eight minutes ago. I'd like to know how important you think maintaining that house is. Like the house, three lots and four.
So can I, uh, can I ask a couple of questions? I'm confused, um. All of those lots are in the future MBTA overlay district, hasn't been proved yet. So we can't assess, I mean, we can't assess under that because it's not in our laws yet. Um, and then. So all four of those lots are in there, so I'm, and, and what do you need on Deer Hill, 160 feet for frontage?
Well, you'll forgive me with no antipuses. I thought that had been approved.
So it's been approved by town meeting. It's awaiting the attorney general's and the state's approval as well. So seek approvals, but you can't get a building permit or anything under. So if these lots were approved, you still can't, let's say, pull a permit for a five unit. So, um, but the, the point is, is that you're trying to do this under the existing zone.
I think that's correct, yes.
And the only thing is, is that the three lots along Pine Street conform with the existing zoning. The only issue is the frontage for the lot in the back.
Yes.
And so that's something. So are you, so then your question having to do with. So then your question having to do with, um. Would we prefer that that house remain on the corner? Would that mean if you ask for variance or frontage?
That doesn't.
You could retain that house?
It doesn't.
I know that doesn't really.
Relate to the application for the A and R. It only, it only determine the frontage in the act.
Well, it's quite easy to modify this plan to reflect. What I didn't understand is the frontage requirement for them, but that it will require at least some considerable demolition on this. But apparently that's, this house adjacent, the adjacent house, 34 is, is coming down anyway, the prep. But I guess, which is different than what I had in mind.
So in terms of your course of action, would you like withdraw what you filed, or do you want to send and modify, Mark, what would you say?
It's up to the applicant, it can be done either way.
I, I think it's easiest thing is just to withdraw. Where you said on the house. Which is not what I thought you would want, because I'm thinking that the Pine Street corridor should look to the extent that like it does, but. These will all be available to be duplexed on.
Not under the new zoning, that's a multifamily.
Well, it could be a two family or a multi.
No, it's two, two families on a lot or one, three families.
He can build under our current zoning, which would be a two family.
Only on lot two, not lot three.
And he wants, and he want, he want.
Under our current zoning, you can only build a two family if there's an existing structure. You can build a one family on lot three on your existing lot.
But if the, if the, once the chart is finally approved, and if a variation of this is approved, and he chose to build two units on one of those, that if three or four, he could do that as long as the total didn't exceed.
No, now he's got new lots, if he doesn't, if he doesn't, if lot two and three remain one lot, then he can build two duplexes on one lot. But if they're separate lots.
What is that, Sarah, again, if lots two and three?
The definition of the multifamily housing is either a three family on one lot or two, two families. And so it'd be under the chart, you have to do the multifamily. And so if lots two and three are separate, you can do a three family on each one, but you can't do a two family. Because it's not a multifamily, if lots two and three are one lot, then you could do two, two families on that one lot. Under the chart.
And he can mix and match. He picks, he, he does, builds under current zoning or new zoning?
Correct.
On a whole different lot?
Well, it would be the lots that existed on November 18th of 2024.
Well, but you can't, you can't, I'm sorry, but you can't mix and match that criteria in the sense that if he wanted to build a two family on a lot with an existing house, and then a lot next to it, build five unit, he could.
As long as they were the lots that existed on November 18th, yeah.
No, they don't, the exact lots don't have to exist, because otherwise we wouldn't be able to approve an A and R.
Well. Help me understand this, I thought the original proposals that I bought would allow me to do 10 units under the. So my original proposal is one, two, three, and four, I'll back seven units. But now if I changed this such that this is a, you know, has frontage, then I don't know what I could do, two, four, six.
What is it again, two, four, six, and 10 more?
No, no, two, four, six, I'm sorry. I, I don't think that's my intention, because I thought Pine Street is a neighborhood of single families, with a few exceptions, there's a couple of them. But I thought these should be single family homes on Pine Street. And it's quite easy to pick these businesses, or incredibly for bungalows. From my intention, which was to come here and be approved, is to take this back, yeah, call it back from the agenda, try again, with the difference. But I'd like to know that I leave you understanding what is allowed.
Well, the only thing we're deciding today is the A and R that's before us. We can't really give you advice on what to change it to, I mean, you can meet with the planner, um, but we can't really give you advice on how to change your plan tonight, just dealing with the aim.
Yes.
So what's the action plan then from now?
I'm going to take this home, I'm going to ask you all to let me withdraw it. I'm going to bring it back likely as three formas and one lot behind that does have it requisite fronted. You're going to see it again as a formate without respect to any, uh.
Mark, do you think?
You should just vote to accept the withdrawal.
Um, any discussion on the proposed withdrawal?
Can I give a friendly suggestion?
Yes.
You might want to withdraw without prejudice.
But I, yeah.
Thank you.
Any other discussion on the withdrawal?
Is there a Town of Manchester hand up on the new? Right or? Oh, there is a hand up. MBTS.
MBTS?
I ask one more before you vote. Is there an expectation as to when the three A will be officially?
Um, they're nine, excuse me, the 90 days is, um, I sent you the date, Mary, the 11th, I think, apart. So we should hear on the 11th of March, unless they request that.
I don't think this formate plan predicated on A and R.
Okay. Can you tell me what form A means?
Proportional not required.
His, his.
Oh, A and R.
I'm sorry.
Oh, I got you, okay. Um, I can't. If they put their hand down, like, okay, all right.
Okay, just, that's almost certainly.
But I know it's either. Um, any other discussion among the board? Yes.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes.
Voting to withdraw?
Yeah, yeah.
Tell me, feel, I'm sorry.
No prejudice.
Yes.
No prejudice.
I'm sorry you had to come in tonight.
No, no, thank you. Get it, that would be.
All right, um, next up is the 26th Summer Street. Um, we're not, this is not the hammering on the, uh, requesting for a special permit, but we did invite um, representative of the applicant to come in. Um, because of the hosting issues, we can't have all these special permits carrying in. So we invited on the sidewalk, um, with three of us, um. Were present with the representative and the owner, uh, we invited the representative to come in and talk a little bit about the application to each property without having the official here.
Um, I remember just a question.
Oh, discussion, yes.
Yeah, so you guys, if you have any questions to.
Oh, okay.
Any questions you may have from the sidewalk, I know only a few of us were there, um, but yeah, if you have any questions, please.
Could somebody give a quick overview of what's going to make it?
He went on a sidewalk?
Yes.
Oh.
Um. So this is 206, 208 Summer Street, um, lot. Um, you want to just summarize what it is, with very.
Just the board, Tom Sax again, Hinkart Associates, so yep, uh, we, last meeting, um, I was here for an A and R plan for 206, 208 Summer Street. Um, during our sidewalk, we were focusing on special permit application for, um, earthwork. Um, there's a few of those standards that we will, that are applying to our project, we're moving, you know, exceeding the cut bill for an area, there's a certain amount of cubic yards that will be moving on onsite. Um, so during our sidewalk, we basically just went through the plan together. We looked at locations where we are moving more soil, specifically around the septic, around the driveway, and around where the house proposed. Um, I described the plan, but, um, everything that we're doing is catering around those three backdoors, the building, this, the driveway, and the septic, um, if you're onsite, you remember it was quite a steep driveway. Um, everything is to the town, uh, fire department standards for the driveway design. Um, the septic, we did have a proposed retaining wall, um, some people weren't in the retaining wall, but it was necessary to get our separation of groundwaters. And we, it was asked, well, why don't you move the septic? That site is a lot of ledge, and that was the best testing results that we received on the site. So that's how you, that's just specific areas, um, we were pretty lucky to find that, so. Um, and then just all the cut bill will be related to the driveway, so when I did the calculations, as you'll see in the memos, you'll see next week. Um, um, yeah, it's just, uh, there's a lot of earthwork being done and that's it.
Uh, one question that did come up on the sidewalk was what materials you were planning to use for the retaining wall? And approximately how high the retaining wall would be?
Yeah, so.
And if I could just say, there wasn't an issue on the retention, it was the materials that you posed to use.
Yeah, so, um, the height's going to vary along the driveways, a 15% slope, and then it grades down to an eight, then a 4% slope. So it's going to be a, basically a wall that's going to gradually get taller as you go down the driveway. Um, your max height is at 10 feet at the bottom of the driveway. Um, the material we were suggesting was modular block. Um, it was requested that we may look into boulder walls. The issue is we need separation between the septic field and the retaining wall, and with boulders, you start getting thicker and thicker walls. And then next thing you know, the boulder will be on top of the septic area, which we can't have, and that's constrained by the common driveway, so. Um, we were proposing modular block, uh, recast concrete. Um, I was going to dig up some examples for our informal meeting together, um, and we can review those at that time.
What's the informal, is this the informal meeting?
Um, no, we're scheduling something outside, um, Sarah, uh, proposed that we, because we got pushed in the cricket, the March 10th meeting, that we do an informal meeting outside of, um, Monday nights, and, uh, we just discuss any other issues that they had with the plan or any topics of concern.
I would suggest that all those happen at a public meeting, so all the audience is in here going on. Um, I think these one-off meetings would probably happen.
Yeah. I thought, I thought you were going to give some examples, but I.
I, I understood, I thought.
I don't think so, man, yeah, that she would need individually.
She meant specifically it wouldn't be a, a public hearing, it would be an informal.
Yeah, that's what.
That's what tonight was going to be.
Yeah.
I was at the agenda this afternoon, because I would have, no one did.
I'm sorry.
But it's something I could definitely forward over some type of, what?
Yeah, if you, if you send some, some, uh, some of the spec.
Yes, I don't want to.
I can forward it to support.
Obviously, my client's going to be the one building this, and I don't want to step outside what I think would work, but if it's outside, like, it, it's up to him in the end, so just, I'll run by him first.
So are we allowed to discuss this thing? Are we allowed to talk about it at all?
I think we are, yes, because this is a.
This is, this is. By May, this is just a massive amount of earthwork on this.
Yeah.
It is, it is amazing. I followed all those grades around, and I said, holy moly.
So you will see on the plan that we were restricted by the 200 Vernal Pool buffer.
Which is sitting over here.
Yes, we originally submitted the plan through conservation, and we were just trying to see if we have the driveway a little bit shorter, but um, they did not want any work inside the Vernal Pool outside of three, so all retaining walls, driveway, dwelling, um, that was all removed from, removed from here. So later on down the road, I came, we came to you, and we proposed the A and Rs, because we moved the building outside those resource areas. And, um, yeah, there's, there's a lot of earthwork, it's just, you're, you're limited because of the driveway design of a 15% grade. And as you know, onsite, and as you know, Mark, it's very steep onsite, so you're never really catching the grade unless you're doing a cut. Because the hill is exceeding, it's probably a two to one slope naturally.
Yeah, I looked at the grades, I was amazed.
Yeah, yeah, so, um, but that was, we were trying to be as conservative as we could. Um, between the driveway and the common drive, you'll notice that it's going to be all. Um, between the driveway and the common drive, you'll notice that it's gonna be all naturalized area. We're gonna do native species, gonna help with, um, holding the, holding the side of the hill back. Um, and that's, uh, I think that's in our plan, we plan on the first sheet.
Well, I've gone back from Summer Street, you know, the retaining wall.
Um, I'd have to measure it out, but it's probably looking at about three hundred feet. It's not, you, if you stick your head around the corner, you can see it, but if you're going by Summer, by the property at forty miles an hour on Summer Street, you know.
Yeah, I, I drove by it ten miles an hour.
Well, yeah, you let it go a little bit earlier.
There was pretty impressive amount of construction going on.
Yes.
So is the drive and the, I'll call it the parking patio, if you will, are they pervious materials?
So the, uh, parking court is gonna be a pervious material. Um, and then we proposed, uh, pervious patio in the back. We did not, we did, um, pervious evers are very high upkeep. So instead of doing that down the driveway, we proposed infiltration trench along the sides. So it's pitched at a two percent slope into the side of the hill towards the infiltration trench. And that'll just catch any type of runoff.
And the intent is to catch it, but have it infiltrate the soil after, not, not rain it all the way down the block.
Exactly, yeah, you'll see, it's kinda hard to see on the plans, but there are check dams along the way and it's to reduce any type of flow down the hill. We want to infiltrate, we got good soils for the septic, so we kinda pulled that information, said, all right, soils are decent, so things alone me sand, so, um, it has a better infiltration rate.
Your septic field is all the way down at the base?
Yes, yeah.
So you're starting at elevation eighty-seven and you'll be coming down to elevation. Now, what's it coming down?
Forty-two.
Yeah, that's, you're, you're dropping fast, aren't you? What's your intent there?
For the storm.
Yeah, the septic field, how are you gonna get down to it?
Um, so it can all be gravity, we're proposing a drop sewer manhole about halfway down.
Off, straight down and.
Yeah, straight down, usually kind of.
The drops.
Yeah.
Yeah, okay, I was gonna say, there's no way you're gonna do it, gravity, it'll just.
No, it's significant drop.
Hmm, wow, okay, sorry, so I just.
No, no, this is, this was supposed to be the point.
I was, I was interested in how they're gonna, just the mechanics of how they're gonna do this. Pretty, pretty dramatic.
So you're building a plateau and then behind this retaining wall, is that kinda what's happening?
Yeah, for the septic field, yeah, because you need the four foot separation to groundwater and redox or redoxymorphic features. So estimates lie groundwater was relatively high. So from that, we had to build up four feet and then you need your pipe and stone, P stone, and then one foot of cover. So you can see how you really, it adds up, you know, you're probably looking at, uh, probably four feet to fill that area.
So what was the issue with the retaining wall material? I mean, besides the, the boulders versus the. I think the appearance.
And the height, I mean, a ten foot wall is, that's a really high wall.
The height of this.
Towers, towers over anybody.
Yeah.
Sorry.
That's a true retaining wall.
Well, from an engineering standpoint, boulder walls really get wide, because you're just stacking rocks. When it's a modular block, you have all these options, you can do geo grade, you can tie it back a little bit. Um, gravity walls go up to twenty feet typically, it'd be probably a larger block. Um, the face would be the same, it just goes deeper into the, into the side of the hill. But it, it wouldn't compare to like if you're using a boulder wall, doing a boulder wall and you're stacking rocks after a while, the thing is probably like eight feet thick.
Is there a fence along the top of it?
Um, we do not want to have one proposed, I believe it. Um, but we typically do, uh, request that there is some type of fencing along the top, fall protection, so. Yeah, that should be added, definitely.
That's gonna make it look even taller, though. I mean, I don't know if you could plant it, but get it put up. You could put fence on top of a ten foot wall.
Yeah, um, we could look into that, um, but I do see fall protection is one of our standards. We do recommend, especially when you start getting above four feet.
Was it ever looked at lowering the elevation of the garage and stepping the house down the hill at all, or?
So the driveway length is indicative of the hillside. So as I mentioned, at fifteen percent slope, you're trying to catch the hillside, that's a two to one slope. So two to one's like fifty percent slope. So our driveway length had to go all the way up the hill and that's cutting. And then extend into the other property because we couldn't catch that grade. So that garage floor elevation is solely dictated by the, the, uh, fire department design standards. Wow.
It kinda reads like it's designed by the fire department, no disrespect, but it's pretty heavy engineering. It doesn't feel like there's anything natural left of this slope.
Yeah, I, I agree.
The whole thing's just blasted away and it feels like it's engineered by the fire department.
I would say there is a significant cut, but a big part of it for us is to re-vegetate the, um, side of the hill and basically build it back. So that the house is incorporating hillside, so, and I would see, you see it now, it's pretty drastic, but we have gone through conservation. They seemed okay with these types of, uh, of plantings that we're proposing. We're planting new trees, we're doing a lot of native stuff for erosion control on the side of the hill.
Yeah, you're planting ten, not even ten trees, I mean, that. Is this, is this two different plant schedules here?
So there's a plant schedule for the hundred foot buffer area and then there's a plant schedule for the hillside.
So which one is the hillside restoration area or up one?
Restoration would be the hundred foot buffer.
Okay.
And then the other one, I think, is even dated.
You're talking about three and three canopy trees, so six canopy trees. And some flowering godwood, so it's not. You know, it's not gonna feel like it's a wooded hillside again anytime soon.
Yeah, it will, it will definitely take time. Um, our wetland scientists typically calculate out based on area, it's something we can take a look at.
Yeah, that's not much density of planting that are in the area. I don't think you could look anymore at denser coverage. Um, to really, and it's a lot of slope to hold, so, um, you know, a lot of this is. Perennials and ground covers and they're gonna contribute, but they're not gonna hold the slope like tree roots are gonna hold.
Yeah, so anything outside of three to one that we are not disturbing, we're trying to leave it as is. And then anything that we are disturbing greater than three to one, we either have retaining wall, slope stability, and then three to one is self, self-sustaining, self-sustaining, excuse me. So all that grading along the sides, other than the areas where we call out for the turf reinforcement, um, that's all three to one, self-staining grading.
Assuming you plant it.
Yeah, because we see the, the least even long, yeah, exactly.
And so is it indicated what's lawn versus what is wooded in the restoration area? It's all hard to count plant.
It's a little early, the game, we will eventually have some type of landscape architect take a look at everything. Um, but for right now, that, we just wanted to get account for conservation. And anywhere, everything else is gonna relatively be erosion control, uh, seeding, even long.
I don't know if there's any, if you're gonna have a landscape architect involved, getting involved at this stage, to see if there's anything you could do with a more. You know, a gentler drive, perhaps setting the floor elevations at a lower level.
We, the floor elevations were dictated by the hillside and the driveway design standards.
Yeah, yeah, I can't believe there's only, there's not one level to set a house at or a driveway at, like, there are choices you can make, right? So except. There's never only one design option.
Yes.
I understand there's one constraint set by the fire department.
We relocated, we looked at middle of the hillside, um, and so relatively, if you have a twenty-five foot change in elevation, think about it, you lose all that driveway length. So we just have to keep extending the driveway to make up that elevation still. So it's still have a big loop around it, still have to go to the top of the hill and.
I would tend to agree with Laura, though, there is, there is definitely more than one design solution. This looks, being an engineer, having worked in engineering and architecture for years, decades, this looks like it's really engineered to solve a problem. Without really thought about the design of how the landscape will look and appear and the roadway and everything else, so. If there's an opportunity, I suggest you just take a look at it and bring on your landscape architect now to kinda soften the blow of what looks like something that's just gonna look. Designed by an engineer versus really thought through.
Hmm.
And maybe you can balance the cut and fill a little more and save some money in excavation.
Very.
Yeah, for the site, it's relatively balanced, soil's brought down for the septic area. And then there's a lot of cutting at the top, so the site is relatively balanced. It's just that the soil is moved throughout the property and that's what triggers the special permit, it's just move, earth disturbance, so.
Yeah.
No blast.
Um, they're, they have done blasting permits, I believe.
So there's been blasting already?
Yes, yeah, yeah, they had the mats up there when we did the sidewalk.
So, but isn't blasting part of the earth removal bylaw and because of earth removal bylaw, not really, you do it before you get the permit, special permit?
From what I've gathered, they've done the permit, but they didn't know that they had significant amount of earth removal or movement to trigger a special permit.
Something for Mark to look into, because I see the. Special permit's supposed to come before the blasting, if you're doing earth removal.
Yeah, and then once we realized we had a significant amount of cut in the area with the design, we thought to work and now we're proposing to the special permit.
You moved the house from its original location for the rover down for the rover to that, then.
It's been moved already, Mark, we just said, it's been moved all.
So this, this house, the original location was a little.
It was adjacent to the Vernal Pool Buffer.
Over here, oh.
Yes, so going through conservation, we discussed it and they did not want to see any type of impervious area within the Vernal Pool. It's understandable, so.
Yeah.
We relocated the house further back into the adjacent property that Mr. Huff owns. And that was for the A and R two weeks ago, where we got the approval for the new property line.
Wow.
But yeah, all of that is, it's just dictated by the slope of the hill and the driveway design. Because just to catch that grade at the, for the garage, that's, you just need that length of driveway.
Challenging site.
Yes. Plus you're limited where the septic is at the bottom, it's the best soil testing we got. Um, it's, it is a very challenging site.
But I still don't understand why you can't just lower the elevation of the house and garage, so you don't have to gain so much. Um, you don't have to travel forty, forty plus feet up. Because you're creating a platform for the house, but there's cut on the side of it.
Yeah, so on one side of the house, I believe the elevation was seventy-eight, then on the other, adjacent side of the house, it was ninety-eight, the opposite side. So it's, that's just your crazy two to one slope.
Yeah, that's across the footprint of the building, wow.
So we're basically adding a fill area to level it out and then just setting the building on it and then just catching the slope with the turf reinforcement mats and retaining wall. You can only cut so much into the hillside, it's, it's just a strong, it's just a tough site. Any other questions?
There's a hand up. There, here. You're a kid, go ahead.
Yes, hi, thank you, Sarah Pierce, Nine Friends Street. So I'm just a little, um, curious, so you can actually start blasting on a project before getting a permit or going before the planning board?
No, no, you need to go to the planning board before you, you already said blasting.
Oh, I guess I misunderstood what was said, that I thought, I thought I.
This permit is not, excuse me, sorry.
No, go ahead.
This permit is not for the blasting, it's for the change in earth removal, cut fill. Um, we triggered a few of the, uh, yardage. Um, they have bylaws, for lack of a better term. So once we realized we were moving that much earth, we needed to go back to the planning board and get this approved.
So did you blast before you got a permit or did you get one from the fire department? I don't understand.
No, we did not blast before we got our blasting permit. Uh, this is not a blasting permit, this is a permit for, um, moving more soil material, more material onsite.
Okay, I'm just concerned because it seems like there's so much blasting going on throughout town. Especially like Spyrock, C Street area, that was a tremendous amount of blasting that happened and forever changed that area. I mean, I just also wondered, what is being built back there?
Um, it is, the site we're talking about is a, is a house for a family.
Just a single family house?
Yep, the owner owns the property we're discussing and the adjacent lot, it's his family's house and his, um, hopefully his parents' house.
Oh, wow, okay, all right, thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions from the board?
But what is our, we're not making decisions?
We're not making, no, because of the posting issue, we couldn't have the official hearing on the special permit application until March. But at the sidewalk, um, Sarah had invited, uh, representative come tonight, I sit informally, go over the project.
So, um. If you would consider bringing your landscape architect on and taking another look, like, and seeing if there's something that's a little more aesthetic to the. Here, here of the neighborhood and the.
Yeah, it's definitely something to look into, so you're looking for more relative like plantings.
Not like, not just plantings, I'm looking at the grading of the site and the alignment of the site. And seeing if there's a way, I mean, you're talking about a ten foot retaining wall, there's a lot of. Expense and earth removal that is, um, creating a very unnatural looking condition. In the, in the way that the site was graded and that the road is, um, retained. And so it might be more efficient and possibly. Better outcome if you were to collaborate with the landscape architect that you're bringing onboard anyhow in the sighting of the house. Driveway and the setting and the finished floor elevation and the rate of the driveway.
Yes, so it's something that we could definitely discuss, but the, for the relative design, it's gonna be all on the civil side. They're not gonna take into account typically the driveway, uh, regs, uh, it's, it's gonna be still more on the civil side. We can collab and determine like more plantings and make it more visually appealing, but it's definitely, like, it's a tough site. There's gonna be a lot of cut for a feasible driveway in a house.
There's another hand up. Um, is it Zoom user, user, hey, Zoom user?
I'm assuming that may be me, um, sorry, Adam Zager, um, I just wanted to correct the record. Um, I represent the owners of the C Street property that was just referred to, there's been no blasting, um, at that site. I think the planning board's aware of that, but I just wanted to correct that for the record, uh, thank you.
Oh, thank you.
Any other questions? Any other questions from the public on, um, two oh six, two oh eight Summer Street? But we'll have the actual hearing, yes, on May tenth.
March.
March tenth, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, been pushed off enough. Right, thank you for coming in.
Awesome. Sorry, I didn't have anything for you guys.
Is Adam your client?
What's that?
Is Adam your.
He said for C Street, not Summer Street.
Not Summer Street, C Street.
Adam represents, um, the C Street.
Oh, okay. And he's been on building committees with me, that's what I did.
Yeah, I didn't recognize him.
What are we talking about? No.
Sorry, just listened, just mostly listening in, but wanted to correct that record on behalf of Liz and Tim.
Oh, no, he is, he is our project, Adam, are you still there?
Yes, I am still here.
So you are, you are familiar with the site with Mr. Huff?
Excuse, I'm, I was just commenting on, on, on the C Street site, that Sarah had, had references have been subject to blasting.
I don't know.
Yeah, we're talking about some. I'm sorry.
That's all right.
I won't hijack your media. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next, um, the driveway and the bylaw often change, Mark, do you? Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
The driveway entrances came up, uh, for a couple, couple of different reasons, um. One is, it was recently a driveway that was constructed as a loop driveway with two entrances. As well as so questions about whether driveway entrances, two entrances, you can be allowed by special permit or not. Bylaw itself says can't have. But later in the bylaw, it says, well, planning board can issue special permits for things that are different than in here, but I thought it'd be better just to clarify driveway entrances and just and to allow specifically the driveway entrances with a special permit from the planning board. So that it specifically allows that. And I also, and then at the end of what we have, is I added an enforcement section as well, which mirrors some of the other enforcement sections by law. And then I also met with a fire chief and there were a couple of things that he felt should be amended in both bylaw and in our regulation. So we didn't, because of the short time period, we didn't discuss other changes to the regulations, which are a little more specific about construction standards. Uh, but he thought, you know, after we discussed, we should we should make perhaps make a couple of other changes to the to the bylaw itself. So for discussion purposes, I put them down in here and which would be to um, he wanted the minimum driveway width increased from eight feet to ten feet. He says, one of his trucks is, his ladder truck is eight foot six inches wide, so that wouldn't work. So he wants it to be a minimum of ten feet. And, you know, if we have a maximum of twelve feet, but so we talked about what if someone has, you know, side by side uh, garages, which are twenty feet roughly wide, now they can't have an extra wide drive to the street. So um, and that's not always, since we have a lot of houses in the village and just beyond. Uh, we talked about maybe increasing that twenty feet.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that second part about the double wide drive.
Yeah, so if you have side by side garages, generally you 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 and you have a driveway that goes out to the street, typically it'd be twenty feet wide.
What is our?
Current maximum is twelve, current maximum is twelve.
So we want to change the minimum ten from eight and the maximum from twelve to twenty?
So why didn't he put this on the memo that he sent us? Twenty is really wide. We spent all this time trying to narrow it down. And if you have a double wide garage, you don't back straight out. You back out to the where the driveway narrows. So I think we're going backwards on this one.
Well, that's that's not something that he his concern has to do with minimums standard. It's not maximum standard. That's correct. The other thing is this driveway entrances, the maximum grade of six percent within twenty five feet. So that is something that he needs, otherwise his ladder truck bottoms out as it can go up. So he can't have a steep grade coming down, has to be six percent, and then it can increase, but they've got to be able to get the truck in there first.
That was designed by the fire department, fifteen percent.
The prior, yeah.
So these are, these are the the changes that to the bylaw itself.
Is this to be considered for Springtown meeting?
That's correct. So the the Springtown meeting schedule would be we discuss stuff tonight as well, this and some others if you want, put them all on the agenda. We would do a final discussion on March tenth. We are, as we discussed previously, we scheduled a public hearing for the associate member and for the two articles related accessory dwelling units for the tenth. It won't be the official legal public hearing, but it'll be a notice public hearing. Um, so that you can make a final decision on what language to send to the select board regarding like numbers of associate members and like the terms. That type of thing. You wanted some input, same thing with the ADUs. You would then vote all the articles after the tenth, at the meeting of the tenth. And then it would go to the select board and they would vote to place it on the warrant at their meeting a week a week later, seventeenth. And we would schedule our public hearing for.
Was that the sixty days? So we are we getting it to the select board sixty days before town meeting? About sixty days of February twenty eighth? That's what KP Law says. Was it sixty days before all town meeting, refer any articles to the Board of Select? Were we meeting those dates?
Uh, I don't know what you're reading from, but we are meeting the select board's deadline for closing the warrant.
So KP Law gave us Manchester a town meeting checklist and it goes by the deadline dates. And so for all town meeting, which is different than special town meeting, we have sixty days before all town meeting to get these to in com, the select board. For their review.
I don't know whether it's in the statute, so I don't know what they're referring.
It is in our general bylaw. I just want to make sure we're meeting the appropriate deadline. Well, the select board did at its last meeting review not the the driveway, but they reviewed the others that we had discussed, the associate members, the special permit. Criteria, the introduction change and to ADU possibilities. They reviewed all of those and gave Mark comments on them. Um, but I don't know if that meets that requirement. And I don't know if that's a statute or required. It would only. It is if it's in our general bylaw. But but we haven't completed the ADU bylaw, so I don't know what they reviewed yet. Well, they reviewed what we had discussed thus far. But not the final. Right. We don't have a plan. Right, that's why I'm saying we got to make, I mean, I think obviously, we're not meeting the deadlines if we we haven't done anything yet with the final, so. But anyway, can I make comments on the driveway entrance? So I think it's it's good to clarify that if if somebody wants two openings, that they have to get a special permit. I think that currently isn't clear. But I do think if we're going to change details, other details in the the bylaw, we should change them all at once and not dribs and drabs over over time. And the fire chief gave us very clear statements of what he wanted to see, and so I don't know why we wouldn't do that all at once. So he recommended the the minimum width to ten feet. He did not give any maximum, and I personally would keep twelve foot maximum that we had spent a long time discussing. And then he goes into grade requirements and the ninety degrees angles intersecting the road. And driveway lengths and things like that. So if we're going to start putting in slopes, six percent, except, you know, we should just, again, do it all at once, what he suggested. So I think we need to talk about that. And then the other thing is that when you're adding something to section D, the last paragraph, you have to clarify, it says enforcement is through the mechanism set forth in Article One, Section Four, but then you have to clarify that that's section four, section B. But section four, section B doesn't actually give any mechanism for a fine, a three hundred dollar fine for driveway. So they list out wetland violations, things, parking violation, things like that, but there's nothing for driveway. So the way I read it, it just kind of goes into.
That's why I put it in this specific section, because some of the some of the the regulation or bylaws in the general bylaw have the penalty in the section and some, like you said, are listed in the article one, section four, under those lists used. So it's done both ways.
But where are you attempting to put it in Article One, Section Four?
No, I'm saying there's also the enforcement mechanism is in Article One, Section Four. And then here we're putting what penalty?
On the penalty, would it make sense to put all the penalties in one document so that when you update things, update them holistically?
Yeah, yes, I think we talked about that.
That's the detail, but I know we've discussed our feedback behind here for the fallies and I just want to they were all in one document or one section.
Well, our current, what I'm proposing to remove is is in the section, which is fifty dollars a day. So that's why I put it back in the section. But I increased it to three hundred, but there is some of the other section.
So who's the enforcement agent? For driveways?
Commission.
So he has taken on that role? Because last I spoke with him, he said it was not in his venue.
The several of the other bylaws refer to the enforcement agent, so that I'll I'll check on them.
So I think it's just the same question that we've had when we were talking about that school street address that that you sent a letter to, right? Did we hear back from them?
No, we haven't.
Can you send us a copy of that? That that we were going round and round with the discussion of who's the actual enforcement officer for these driveway entrances and I don't think we've settled that yet.
So I'll talk to Paul, talk to Greg, try and draw who the enforcement agent is. Also look through, I'm not as familiar with the general bylaw, but I'll read through it a little bit more and see if I can find a reference.
Yeah, so can we as a board discuss that? I I mean, again, I think it's great to clarify that if it's more than one entrance, it gets a planning board special permit. But if we're going to change the minimum width and the fire chief needs certain requirements for his, as he describes, you know, safety access. I don't know why we wouldn't do it all at once.
Well, I think, well, because the other is your planning board regulation, which is what bylaw authorizes you to adopt, and that's where you have more of your construction standards. The these are just a couple of specific things that you already had the minimum width in the bylaw, not the regulation. You know, and you already had number of entrances to bylaw. So you already had a few design elements in the bylaw, so I didn't really want to take it out because then you wouldn't have anything unless you subsequently added those to the regulations. Given a short length of time, I wanted to give you something that would be for for town meeting, where we could amend the bylaw. So and add this one section about the six percent grade, because that's kind of something that he always have to have. So um, the rest of the regulations, you can work on, meet with him and to incorporate the rest of those design elements into adjusting the rest of our.
I have some more comments that somewhat complimentary, some areas are a little different. Um, on the first point, which is there shall not be more than one apron and curb cut per residential lot to remove that. We did have a lot of discussion around that, and I think that the intent, I felt like the intent was to not allow double entrances on a residential lot. And so now by just taking it out and saying you need a special permit, that implies that, sure, you can have a double driveway entrance, just come and get a special permit. We don't we need a good reason to disallow a special permit. So if we're giving special permits for for double curb cuts, it seems to me that there's sort of a an opening to allow those in a more in a more a regular way. And so I would advocate not making it a special permit, but simply clarifying it if we need to save one curb cut per residential lot. If there are already two, maybe those are grandfathered in, but going forward, one curb cut per lot, if the board agrees that that was the intent. I don't know why we would allow a special permit to service one lot. Uh, and then on the dimensional requirements, uh, I would strike the maximum driveway width. I don't think that's related to safety. Uh, and I do have a concern with what seems like dimensionally small changes are going to have a multiplying effect in terms of areas of paving and potentially impervious or heat island effect or removal of, you know, landscaped areas. And so could we, I'm wondering on the, I think we should just strike the maximum change. We should keep the twelve width, the twelve foot width that we originally decided on. And in terms of changing from eight to ten, if the current width of the truck is eight foot six and we're just talking about, you know, fire clearance, could we compromise at nine? These are not, you know, these are not buildings that are needing to be circulated all the way around. You have a road in front of the building too. I certainly want to allow safety access, but I'm just wondering, what's the smallest we can knock it down that would serve the fire chief's?
He said ten, he said ten, because, well, just for example, previous driveway that you're talking about that goes up the hill. You know, if there's plantings and other stuff like right there, as the truck turns, it's going to need room to clear because of the does not keep away from it.
So is he wanting it to be ten at the entrance or ten all the way up?
So
Does it?
So a minimum, a minimum of ten all the way up the driveway. Within the bylaw, he's going to want us to look at and discuss in here what we require for radiuses. He's got some standards in there. For turning radiuses, we have something. We refer to different things, so we're going to have to figure out what what's. Other things like pillars, like we have to add something in the regulations if we already have something, because someone sets a pillar right near the entrance. And who's not gonna be able to make the. Radius turn with this truck stuff. So.
So I hear that.
So, so these are all things that we would discuss later in adjusting the regulation. These are just a couple of things and I, I, I get keeping the twelve feet. You know, I get that and clarifying the enforcement thing, but.
So I understand about the eighteen, ten, why the ten is necessary. However, this is driveway entrances. So we're just talking about what occurs with the road. This is the regulation that. Defines the width of the driveway all the way up. I mean, we spend a lot of time saying that's somewhere else. So I just don't think that, other than at the entrance, it just doesn't seem like the driveway width at ten feet. All the way up applies to this regulation because it's driveway entry. So wherever that belongs.
So that would have to be in the, our planning board regulations that we pass off to P D D. So we should.
Because you made that change, but make it in the right place.
Changes because we're not very good at updating our document.
So, so these changes, so my plan was is we would get these changes to town meetings, we fix the. Bylaw. But then, once. We get a little slowdown, we will then go pull out the regulations, pair it with what the chief submitted. And try and update those, incorporate everything together. But that's something the planning board can do at their leisure.
Now, just to be clear, this is a change to the general bylaw and not the zoning bylaw.
That's correct.
That really has to go to select board, not us.
That's correct. But, but you're the board, I believe, who worked on it. So they're looking for.
They're looking for recommendations from us. So what should we do about the special permit in the two opening? Or think about that?
So I, not having been part of the original discussion, I think what you, the point you made, Laura, was a good one. And then why open? That option. I just think that gives people reason to.
I agree in principle, except I'll give you an example of where a double entrance, we gave one. And that was because there was a child living in the house who was paraplegic or something. And the van, we come pick her up and the van couldn't come into the driveway.
I remember that case. Yeah, I remember there was also some contention about it because it was. Not necessary for the van to have a double entrance to back out. They were simply trying to. You know, stop the beeping noise from the backup man. And there were. I remember we discussed it as a hardship. We ended up granting that. I think there was some. It was a favorite of discussion. And then afterwards, there was discussion that some of the, you know, some of the neighbors were opposed to that and. And actually. You know, there were other factors. And it was not, there was no functional requirement why you needed a double driveway there. I mean, it was a convenience. And it was a hardship in that case, which was certainly. You know, there was a human story there, but I think that there are. Functional requirements about backing in and backing out. And if it works for, you know, if it functionally works and we're allowing one curb cut. Having two curb cuts has other implications. I mean, it makes it less safe for the pedestrians because you go across that many more curb cuts. It's that much more impervious surface and pavement. So I just think it has ramifications. And as soon as you say, well, you can do it with a special permit, well, then you just pay the special permit fee and you come in and you make your case and. What grounds do we have to say no if they make a justifiable case? A double driveway.
Well, and especially if we haven't laid out anything in the bylaw that says you have to meet these requirements for the special permit, right? If you just say, oh, you need to come for a special permit, there's no rules behind it. So with that particular case that you're talking about, that was in front of us, would that potentially fall under the Dover? Amendment that. For those reasons, it would have to go through anyway. So we wouldn't need that in our.
It's not the Dover amendment, but I know what you mean. It's the.
Like the Equal Act, whatever, yeah.
I don't know. But I, but I think we could adopt. I mean, there are some, some circumstances for some, some places where it wouldn't. Be a problem having two entrances. So. Yeah. So then, so we could write something in, you know, obviously if someone has a large estate lot and. Wants to have a driveway with a couple entrances or they have frontage on a couple of different roads. There's a private road. Let's say one twenty seven, they wanted to have access in and then through, and technically it's two driveways. You know, you could write some certain standards where, where you would not find problematic. You know, that they would have to. Meet in order to obtain. You could put in safety standards. So it might be easy, good to get. As a curvy road, allow them to have an access in at a particular location, but site distance coming out may not be very good. So they have a different. Entrance of that one way loop. Exit on another location. So there are some circumstances where you. Yes, as there's another driveway entrance, doesn't make it unsafe.
Sightlines, you might just pick the place with better sightlines. You're gonna have, you still have one instead of two. I mean, it seems like. We could get into a lot of discussion about what's the criteria to have two? And what are the kind of exceptions that we would make for that? And spin ourselves into a lot of discussion around when is it justified? And you can never really. You can't, you can't know the next one in the door, right? And what the reasons might be for it. But I do worry that with a special permit for. For it to make me just a little. Less convenient, but still.
So, so in the case that you just, Chris, where it sounds like a second driver was granted. That was granted by the planning board? So it came in, it just landed here because, because?
Well, that's when they.
That's when we approved all driveways.
Okay, so that was, all right, okay.
And in that case, I think the work had already been done and they, then they discovered it and they came back, they came in sort of after the fact.
Yeah, I think that's right.
Yeah.
So where do we leave this? Do we take out what you put in with special permit or do?
We vote? Or? I, I'm sort of on the fence because I look at. People who have a very small lot on a very busy road. And have difficulty maneuvering on and off a very busy street. But I'm also very sensitive to. The too much pavement issue and. Other safety issues, safety of pedestrians and biker. But. But I'm sort of on the chat.
It's a tough one because we did a driveway entrance. Another. Half circle, what do you call? So two entrances and we put on the permit that. You can't, you have to like go in one way, come out one way. And then, you know, I forget the, this exact streets, but it was like you can't. Like park and have your cars facing out and zoom out at both ends, right? So we literally put that on the special permit. Well, every time I drive by that driveway, guess where those two cars are? Boom, ready to head out on a. I know the streets, I'm just not gonna say it, on a busy street. Or kids walking to school. So now they've got, you know, pretty close by. And. So I don't think we did the neighborhood any favors. We, we tried to accommodate the applicant. And by putting on that, you know, you can't do this, but we know there's no enforcement with that. So it doesn't mean anything. So I guess that's just an example of a. Two entrance driveway gone a little bad.
Every time there's a curb cut across the sidewalk, that's a chance for pedestrian vehicle conflict. And the more times that you. Break through that. More chance there are. I understand it for commercial, for, you know. Businesses, all of that makes sense. For institutional, church, I mean, we had the. Church that came before us and we had a lot of discussion around the driveway circulation there. But for house. I think that. We live in a village where people back out into the street all the time. As a traffic calming effect. And I just think the sidewalks and the, you know, the safety of kids and. People walking down the sidewalks. Parents, the same kind of consideration as the convenience of pulling out and having two driveways.
Any other thoughts?
I just wonder if we, if we. Grant a, a special permit that identifying what criteria is, if we decide to include criteria. Really hard, right? We're gonna forget something or leave something out. Someone's gonna. Contest it. And then that's just gonna be it.
Well, you can.
I would say either we, it's in. Or it's not. Because trying to come up with criteria is gonna be really.
So we could leave it the way it is, is what it sounds like.
Which is confusing, it sounds like.
Well, it currently says you can't have two. So, so it's, it's pretty clear. So what we could do is say, well, let's put in a couple of these other things and. We'll revisit that when we have time to, to look at the regulations in that first. Part here. And we'll work on them concurrently. So if we then say, okay. We have some clear standards of when it's okay, you know, and so now we'll put the two. Things forward together and, and do it that way. Sometimes it's okay to put things quickly and sometimes it might be of.
I think, I think that's gonna be, it's less changed to the intent of this. You were making a few adjustments for. Our department safety, I think, with this about grades and with the opening of the driveway. And it really should be about the entrance of the driveway, not the width all the way up. Then we'll save the one curb cut or two for the bigger discussion.
So I'll make that adjustment and we'll have a final review on the.
Sounds good. Is everyone comfortable with that strategy? But, but I do worry about the phrase, when we have time, at your leisure. Then another law is going to get passed. We have to scramble. Comply with, hopefully not. Okay. Moving on. Associate planning board members. So I did go to. The select board meeting when they discussed that. And they felt strongly, it's one, not two. And. One year, correct?
I don't think there was that set on one year or two years, but they were more set on a joint appointment.
Yes.
They were quite clear that they felt that if there's a vacancy, it's done jointly. And that they wanted to keep that standard.
Does that mean, Mark, jointly?
Yeah, a planning board.
And planning board.
When you got appointed, there was a joint appointment by the select board.
Appointment, okay. So not sharing one person. How would you do that?
Stop sharing, yeah. So we, our intent was to finalize that one for a select, the select board. Preference and then get public comment on that on the ten.
Sounds good to me. Too curious to hear it public.
Well, one of the objections in the past, one is that. Come up from the public is they would rather not have an appointment, they would rather elect. Remember other public. That's just my memory. So site plan review applicability. The select board did not have much comment on that, but I recall.
I just have a typo on there. Number three. Any development expansion or?
Zoning introduction. The select board understands that it doesn't need to be in the actual bylaw, but they do want. A one pager. That would be separate and available. And they also got the one pager in the website. That is my memory of my comments.
Yes, so. We'll basically put up an information sheet onto the main website on. Kind of the procedure that I'll find in here. And then other, something else explaining other development. Where you can find other development regulations.
Any comments on that?
Like a good idea, yes.
Except ADU. So we talked about both. And. They agreed that we need to get public comment. As to whether or not residents want to have the. Discretionary additional zoning or larger. Maybe something that people feel strongly we should not have or we should. Realizing that there are already large heritage houses. Garage apartments, large garages.
I think there was a. Proposal that there could be a backup. Bylaw proposal change that would be withdrawn if this passed.
Oh, regarding the.
Which would simply say that.
So I have comments because there was changes.
On which one, yeah?
It's a documented.
Yeah, so for both of them. So for the. General and the large. So I, I don't know. Like go through them?
Yes.
Which one are you starting with, Mary? General, I guess. I don't know what we're calling it.
Standard.
Standard.
The required.
Okay, I'll just go from the top. So number one. And maybe I'm just reading this incorrectly. It says only one accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted on a lot or in a structure. Isn't it that we're only allowing one on a lot, period? Whether it's. Patch or detat. So I kind of read that too.
Where, where is that?
I'm on the. Like last page, nine point one point three. like last page, nine point one point three. Does anybody else read it like that, or is that just me?
Actually, I think, isn't that one that Ann pointed out?
Yeah.
Now that I'm listening to Mary.
Yeah, she did point out that it was a little confusing. And I think I put it in there just to maybe say that you can't have a house with two accessory dwelling units. You're only allowed to have one accessory.
Well, that was very clear what you just said.
So wouldn't you just take out the last or in a structure, just say only one accessory dwelling unit shall be permitted on a lot?
Yeah. I guess I don't need the structure.
That makes it simple.
Yeah.
That's clearer.
So with three, four, and five. What we've done in other areas of the bylaws is we always clarify that they're Massachusetts licensed you know, architect, engineer, whatever. Do we need to clarify that here as well?
We could put them in our introduction. A general requirement.
I don't think that's necessary. I mean, I've worked on numerous projects where engineers or other people are out of state architect. They're not necessarily asked.
So I think Massachusetts does require that if they are in state, Ron was a stickler on this one.
Worked in partnership. With him.
I'm just saying we've
What's the intent, what's the intent of having, did Mary, was the, you need a registered architect or a registered engineer to do something?
Registered in Massachusetts.
To do what, though?
Stamp, stamp the plans.
Stamp the plans for a residential unit?
No, we're talking about ADUs.
For ADUs, okay, well.
I'm just saying, in other parts of our bylaw, when we say reference an architect or engineer, whatever, we always clarify.
So what I wrote was stamped architectural floor plan shall be submitted for new unit. Is there a better way of wording that? And then the next one said, your architectural plan shall be submitted for any application requiring in addition to any building for having
No, architectural, architectural drawings are required for residential units in Massachusetts.
No, no, no.
We are requiring
Well, whether it's ADU or not, but for anything, a stamped architectural plan, it would seem to be be, I mean, I've, I've done plans, I've done my own drawings.
I understand. This is a little bit more than what is necessarily required.
Yeah, definitely.
I understand this.
I think they came out of the design guidelines, is that correct?
No, I don't know, I didn't pull it. I just hope these for this particular thing, thinking people may want to be more precise about that because it is something new, so that's why I put it in. You don't think it needs to be
Well, if somebody's got to stamp it, it's gotta be for the state where you are, where the project is. You have to be registered. I just wondered about whether it's necessary to have stamped engineering or
That's, that's up to the board to discuss. I, I put it in there thinking accessory dwelling units by right are new. Therefore, yes, you can do it, but you have to provide a higher level of, you know, submittals in order to ensure that, you know, that you are following them. So you have to submit an architectural floor plan. You have to submit, if you're gonna add on to the building, you wanna see, you know, architectural drawings, elevation drawing, or wanna see an engineered site plan. It, it might be over the top. I mean, that's up to you to discuss.
I guess, I guess you can have it.
I, I, I'm not saying it's not over the top. So.
I don't have my copy of the regulation. But is that something that we require for a single family? Because are we permitted by those regulations on the standard, which are the required? Do we, are we committed? Are the regulations put higher level on requirement?
I would bet not.
Well, I think oh
Well, if we, whatever we
For some things we can't, yes, for some things we can't.
You remember what it says in the regulation.
We can't do anything more onerous for an ADU than for a single family. But we've already said we can do a site plan review and design guidelines for ADUs. So I don't know if this can then fall under those umbrellas.
I'm not sure we can if we don't require one for a single family house.
That would be my only hesitation, if we could just figure that out. Well, if we are permitted to, is that something that we want to add?
I guess I'd like to understand what the building inspector currently requires for by right builds. Right? So what does he look at when a single family home is being built?
I think he does, there is, there is criteria, this Massachusetts Building Code. It says the criteria by which you need a full stamp for mechanical, electrical, plumbing, architectural, whatever it is. And when you don't need it, it's based on the size of the project. That's the world I lived in, because we all did it, we did all commercial projects.
Could we just refer to the building code?
You can refer to the building code as far as the need for a stamp.
Yeah.
It's very clearly defined in there.
Why don't we just do that?
But you're talking about for the ADU.
Yeah, I'm talking about, you wanna ensure that you have stamped plans for ADU.
So what that means, though, Mark, it's an architectural designer, not an architect, an architectural designer, designs the whole thing, and now we have to go find a stamp, stamp it to prove it's done. Same thing with engineering drawings, too.
Yeah.
You're talking about structural engineering.
Yeah, they have to go, well, no, say you're gonna do an addition or an ADU, you're gonna do an addition.
Can I suggest, can I suggest, let me do a little, let me do a little research on my end of it?
Okay.
I lived on the high end of it, but we needed everything to be stamped for the, for everything. Yeah, let me, let me do a little research on it and I'll let everybody know.
The other question is, do you wanna, even if you normally wouldn't need a stamp, do you still wanna require? I believe you can do. So that's
While you're researching, number thirteen, I think we have an unintentional meaning there that we want a permanent construction, but we're permanent foundation. And if you
All additions to existing structures shall have a permanent foundation, it may not be temporary, except
Well, we don't want
Trailing, recreational
I understand that. As I was saying, we're not allowing a temporary structure, but if we say a foundation, or, you know, we're saying how the thing is supported, foundation, pudding, spears, micro piles, whatever, like, can we just, I think we're maybe getting a little too prescriptive there. We want it to be a permanent construction. And not
You just say that.
And not, I'm just reacting to the word foundation, because I think that has a specific structural meaning that we're not necessarily
Yeah, if it does, then you're, then you're talking about sparring bearing pressure and everything else associated with a foundation design.
Right. And we might be able to do something that sits a little lighter on the site, but it's still permanent construction attached to a main dwelling or something like
So my question, my question, just reading that thing, what's the intent? You want it to be a permanent structure based there, correct? Not mounted on a trailer or anything like
Well, that's not my sense, but if, if that's what we want, if that's what we, we don't want a, you know, something that can be wheeled off the site and parked somewhere else. And I'm not, I have no judgment, I'm just saying, if that's the goal, then if we're asking permanent construction, I'm just saying, not, let's not be prescriptive unintentionally about how that construction is built.
So to be fair, this language was plucked from another town's that I thought sounded good, but I'm not married to it by any means. But the, the point being that we should probably ensure, yeah, that we don't have mobile homes as an ADU.
Yes.
So whatever words
Yeah, it's just the word foundation that I was reacting to.
Maybe a better way to do is to say you can't, it can't be built on a mobile home, or it can't be built, something like that.
Yeah, it's permanent construction, you know, appropriately anchored to the site, or whatever the right engineering terms are, right? It's gonna be modular, you could stand it up, right? You don't necessarily have to foundation for that.
What's a different word than foundation? Because foundation, you think of as
Foundation, I mean, a foundation is how you anchor a building to the ground in many different ways. It doesn't be a slab, it can be on piers, it's not specifying you have to have a basement foundation.
Yeah, that was why I was asking.
So, so I think just that
Let me do the research, though.
Thank you.
Maybe it's fine, I just wanted
So, and then for number seven, I thought we had discussed. So we say in six that we don't allow short-term rentals. And then, well, one, I thought we were kind of gonna try to merge six and seven, but if we keep them separate, I thought we had discussed at least for a period of not less than one year. But I could be wrong.
Well, I think I originally had some like three or four months thinking that you may want, let someone summer rental and then find the winter rental. Many people need winter rentals. So then I think we talked about at the meeting people not wanting to do that, and so they wanted six months, so that's what I put down, six.
I think that is one we need to feed that from residents.
Yeah.
I do think six and seven should be combined.
Couldn't you just strike six? If you say you can't rent it for less than six months, what else do you need to say?
Well, long-term rentals are
People wanting clarity on, I mean, that's such a, even if it's, even if it's redundant, I think.
Okay. That's redundancy. Fusion, so maybe we keep that. And then what about number fourteen, no borders? What does that mean in relation to six and seven? What's a border?
Well, that's a totally different part of our bylaw, right?
So we allow four borders in a house, blah, blah, blah. And so we were just saying that ADUs wouldn't be used for borders.
And how is a border different than
A border rents a room as opposed to a dwelling unit. So with number twelve, I just don't think it's, it's clear enough. That shall comply with lot coverage requirements, primary building setbacks, and dimensional requirements. I think we have to my suggestion would state the actual section in the bylaw that it must, I don't have the exact section here yet, but shall comply with all district dimensional regulations, height regulations, and height regulations for accessory stuff.
Oh, for, you mean for the dimensional requirements section, and just referring to that
Yeah, so you refer to, not the use table, but you refer to five point four.
Yeah.
And then five point five and five point six.
Well, that's different, that's in conflict with thirteen.
No, you wouldn't refer to five, six. You want them to comply with, with, you want them to comply with the setback requirements in five four.
Take one.
What's that?
Was a primary, the same setback requirements as for a primary house?
Yeah, you would, yeah, so that's second five four.
Yeah, and then five, six is just the
You don't want them to comply with that, you only want them to comply with five.
Well, then five, five.
And five, six.
No, five, six is accessory.
Right, both. If it's a detached ADU, that's an accessory structure.
Yeah, but you want that accessory structure, I thought, comply with the primary setback.
No, I'm sorry, yeah, 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 you're right. Where do we say accessory height? Of the five point six. Well, this is confusing, because we have five point six defines what the height is, but then it also defines the setback. You see that?
Yeah, we only talked about the height as far as, we didn't talk about the height, we only talked about setback.
I thought we talked about
They're adding on to the primary dwelling, then the primary dwelling height would be the requirement. If it's an accessory dwelling, let's say they have a two-family garage with a flat roof. They wanna build up, build the accessory dwelling, so they have to comply with that height.
So how do we get that if it's a detached accessory structure? That it falls within that one and a half story accessory structure requirement?
Well, if they're adding a second
Don't detach.
You know, it's a brand new carriage, but
Because my concern is if this is the basis for this and the large ADU, if that goes through. And so we're allowing a large ADU to be pretty large, and somebody could do three-story.
We can do it's, it's the same.
Two and a half, which is two and a half, thirty-five feet. And so with an accessory structure, we say that can be twenty-five feet. I know.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, Mary, sorry.
That was that was I, what I thought we talked about last meeting. I mean, that's my recommendation, I think we were very clear last morning, meeting, that we want an accessory structure to be accessory. In look and feel and everything else. And so we didn't want, you know, a thirty-five-foot house and then a thirty-five-foot ADU next to it.
So if you had a garage, however, in your backyard and put an accessory unit above it, it couldn't be one and a half stories, it could be two and a half.
But that's an inexisting structure. I think we kind of have to go into some of these nuances, because I, if we don't, then we might end up getting things that residents don't want.
That's gonna happen anyway.
People don't like it. Well, and that's why, you know, as I look at some other towns with their proposed by right ADU bylaws, and they, you know, their, their draft is, you know, six pages long, and ours is like a page. Like, oh, we gotta beef this up a little bit with requirements, because
Well, it'd be pretty tough to build a nine-hundred-square-foot building on, on two and a half stories.
That's true. I'm talking about if the large went through, because this is also the basis for the large.
Even a fifteen-hundred-square-foot house, I guess it could be three-story, it's gonna be almost taller than it is wide.
Yeah, but you see it all over the place. If you don't, if you're trying to meet, you know, setbacks, or you don't have the space, whatever, you build up, right? Isn't that the latest thing that they've for all, you build up. So if you're gonna build up, I don't know how accessory that looks.
Right, I, I'm gonna listen to Adam here. Oh, hold on. Can't hear you.
You're muted.
Thanks. I wanted to weigh in on that, the question that you guys were talking about with regards to the architect and the stamp plans. Because this is something I've, I've worked on, you know, including in Manchester. In Massachusetts, a single family or two-family dwelling does not require an architect and stamp plans. Part of the reason, if, if you started to do that, obviously limit, you know, the, the profession, you couldn't use design professionals. In other words, folks who are out there that do this on a, you know, day-in, day-out basis. Some of them are even in Manchester, some of them are really good, they've appeared before you guys before, I'm not gonna name any names, but you probably would know, there's a long list of them. So if you guys impose that requirement to require stamp plans, you'd essentially disqualify that class of professionals from working on this. My guess is because it's more onerous than, I mean, what, what we're talking about, single families with an accessory unit in it, which is effectively a two-family, so you'd be imposing a requirement that was more onerous than what state law allows, so I'm not sure it would even get approved. But even if it would, I mean, I don't, I don't think it's a good idea because you've got some really, really talented design professionals that you'd sort of push out of the pool of people who could work on these, and you'd drive up the costs for people because they'd have to go and, you know, get a, you know, an architect, a registered architect or a registered engineer to do it. So I just wanted to weigh in on that because I noticed everybody was going back and forth and try to give a little perspective. And then the other thing I wanted to just mention, I know everybody's really quick to say, hey, we don't want these to be used for short-term rentals. But I think one of the things that, that you as a board have to really think about here is that we're not like some of these other towns that have, you know, hotel and motel to protect and, 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 and make sure you don't want to have short-term rentals that would eat into that business. We're the opposite, we have no hotel, no motel, and I think that has a really, really significant effect on, on business downtown. I think we'd like to be able to have more customers, we'd like to have some more vibrancy. If these units are gonna get built, I think we ought to be really careful about just throwing a blanket restriction on no short-term rentals, that some of the folks who come and rent, you know, short-term, you know, with us have been, you know, great people, great, you know, great additions to the town, they've enjoyed their time here, they've shopped at local stores and restaurants. So I think the board ought to think about that really carefully. You know, the police in town can do a great job if there's noise and anything that, that's a problem from these, but I would urge you guys to really, really think about that in the context of Manchester and what we have and what we're sort of looking to do over the long term.
You might be in the minority with that view.
I'm, I'm, I'm happy to be in the minority, but I'd like to be, I'd like to be in the thoughtful minority and, and and bring it up to you guys because I really think it's something to consider, the fact that we don't have any kind of hospitality industry to protect, we need to bring in more people to frequent our stores and our shops, to keep them open, you know, get everything to be more vibrant than it is today. I would think that I'm actually in the majority of town would like things to be a little bit more vibrant and is looking out for the commercial downtown, so I, I really think it's something to think about.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Will you we're gonna clarify twelve?
Yeah.
Did we get any agreement?
And it probably should remove the word stamp, and just say board plan.
I mean, to that point.
Read the whole thing, read the whole thing.
Do we have design guidelines asking for all this stuff?
Um, no, we don't have, we don't have design guidelines for ADUs, the only just thing we would have in here is if they, if they do want to build in a historic district, they have to comply, but that's consistently a process.
Architectural drawing, and number four, do you mean elevation? What is an exterior architectural plan?
Yeah, elevation.
Elevation, so.
So why don't I say the, say elevation? And I'll remove the word stamp from the first, from number three.
And these will all be submitted to the building inspector, these, right?
Yeah.
Yep. I, I want to say in regard, I, I don't think we need to say anything about the match building code because the building code already says what it governs, so we don't need to refer to it. But in the terms of getting stamped, registered, there, there is a health, safety, welfare behind that, and so I think that I'm not saying that we need to require it here, but there's a reason why you get a stamped engineered plan or a stamped architectural plan in addition to, you know, a level of professionalism as a design professional, it's also about.
I, I always recommend that we ask, but we don't mandate it on residential buildings.
I'm not saying that we should mandate it, I'm just saying that there, there's a, there's something behind the registration, it's not just sort of an ice extract you have, it has to do with the public health, safety, and welfare. The clarification.
And for the, the hearing, the select board asked that I combine the, into one separate section, number six, seven, and fourteen, which are the occupancy-related ones under, you know, together, just to pull it out, just with clarity, so.
I would also under nine point one point four one clarify and say one off-street parking. Yeah, just put off-street in there.
Oh.
Did we want to say anywhere that the once an ADU has been added at nine hundred square feet or larger? That ADU shall not be enlarged except by a special permit, do we have to clarify that?
I think so, because it would fall within the second.
The large.
The large one, yeah.
And then this will just lapse over to the large one, is that we have nine point one point two here, it just kind of hangs by itself? I don't know what it is.
All accessory dwelling units shall comply with applicable sections of the bylaw.
Because in the large ADU, you say application complies with the section nine point one two of this, of that, like, so refers to nine point one two, but really all of the regulations fall in nine point one three, I'm just not clear on what's.
Okay, then, where? Uh, yes, you're correct, that should be nine point one three.
Okay. I'm still not clear on nine point one two, but at least it links to the right.
Yeah, that's a variable.
Had a couple on, comment, large, three, anybody else on the standard?
No, I have nothing on the large.
Okay, Laura, Laura, you start.
Oh, mine is three, it's nine point one point three, number four, that last point about two off-street parking spaces are required for the large versus one for the small. Um, we had made the example of you might have an existing carriage house or something, so it doesn't imply to me that you necessarily have more drivers in the family or more people. I think we should have the same off-street parking requirements, one and one. For both, again, I worry about the free for pavement and parking, when I, I know there are differences of opinion, but I'm gonna take my claim here that I would recommend one off-street parking.
I'll support you on that. For the large. So, what other folks think about?
I, I, I put two primarily because you could have three bedrooms easily in fifteen hundred, you have two drivers, you know, so at least two cars, probably, so that's why.
I would agree with that, I, if we're, if this bylaw, which in and of itself, I don't necessarily agree with, but if, if we have a large ADU bylaw, an existing carriage house is a one-off, somebody could go ahead and build a whole new structure that's upwards of how many square feet this comes out to be, and there's gonna be additional cars, so again, it's the nuance of, okay, it might be something existing and, and, you know, mom's living in this house now and she's gonna move to the carriage house, so there's no added cars, but it could also be, it's a whole new structure, and we're trying to not burden the streets more with off-street parking, and so I say, you know, this isn't the by right, this is a special permit required. I think if it's gonna be as big as, as a house, it should have the same requirement.
So for nine hundred and one square feet, you'd require two cars?
Well, this is where it gets into the nuances, right? I mean, you know, if we want to scale it all up, we could definitely do that, but, you know, you can't you know, again, you can do the scenario of, oh, it's granny and she doesn't drive, right? Like, so we can all come up with scenarios for, for whatever side we're on. I think if we're trying to do right by the town and be aware of the off-street parking issue, aware that they are gonna come usually with cars, that we address the problem upfront rather than having an issue down the road.
Well, is it going to prevent someone who has a smaller property of being able to have a little bit larger ADU, having to find space on their property for a car? I worry about that, and then, oh, I do also worry about all the pay, you know, do we really need that for an ADU? Do we need that as a requirement?
Well, we're adding pavement, so to speak, building the ADU, so if you want an ADU, you have to accommodate parking, so you, you know, and I get all that, I'm just stating where, where, and there's different parts of towns that it might be more impactful than others, right? Like the, you know, if, if you're building an ADU on pine street and your extra car is, is ending up in the street, that's gonna be more impactful than if you do it on some faraway street that, you know, nobody travels down, right? So if it has to be a blanket bylaw for everywhere in town, my opinion is that we shouldn't further burden the streets with on-street parking if we're allowing an ADU, and our current ADU bylaw does two parking spots, so we're not doing anything that we don't currently do.
But we don't allow any ADUs in practicality, anyway.
Well, we have an ADU bylaw.
We have a bylaw, but you can't build an ADU, you, you require a double lot, so you might as well build another house and provide your lot. But I think the more important point here is that we're not preventing people from having two parking spaces. If you're gonna build a three-bedroom, fifteen-hundred-square-foot ADU for your son and daughter who are moving in with their children, they're gonna have two cars, so you're gonna have two parking spaces. But if you're building a thousand-square-foot home for your mother who doesn't even drive, why would you need two parking spaces? That makes sense.
Well, again, it's two scenarios, yes, with two outcomes, but you can't guarantee that for the life of that ADU, it's gonna be one outcome or the other. I'm just trying to solve a problem that we know we have. This idea that there won't be cars is just not real, and so we just have different opinions on it. I'm saying my opinion, I think we, we clearly should, if we're gonna let a large ADU be built, yes, you might more of a chance have one car with nine hundred square feet versus fifteen hundred square feet. I'm just living in reality and saying it's gonna come with two, if you have a fifteen-hundred-square-foot ADU, more than likely it's gonna come with two cars, and let's try to accommodate.
But if that happens, it's more than likely they're gonna build two parking spaces when they build it.
Maybe not if we don't require it, because.
Well, I think your assumption is that people aren't gonna, they're always gonna go to the maximum.
Maximum?
Because we have to require the maximum amount of cars, amount of driveway, whatever.
Well, I mean, perhaps, but then you're going to the minimum, so it just, it doesn't, I mean, we're both just kind of stating what our opinion is.
Well, we, we do have lot coverage requirements, you can't have more than certain percentage of your lot, it's impervious surface.
Yeah, but I don't know what that means, but, well, residents will decide.
They will, but what, what would we prefer to have in our proposal? Do we have a preference? As board, we want to put one slash two, get opinions, what, what, what? I would go with just one, but.
No, I'm sorry, I might have missed this, so you're, we're talking about the requirement for both the standard and the large, just the large.
We're only allowed to require one, the standard, and zero.
Just talking about the large.
Yeah, yeah, just the large.
Yeah. I, I tend to agree with Mary that we do have an on-street parking issue in a, you know, the cent, central part of our town, and that, that should be a consideration for why we would require two.
Or any deal.
I'm afraid of a bit of a contrarian, I, the idea of a larger EDU is, I'm just not, I think nine hundred square feet is is fine with me, fifteen hundred square feet is a second house, it's.
It is, it is.
So I, I.
Which is why you need a large.
You know, the, the intent is to relieve the the lack of housing that we have here, and the nine hundred square feet would do that. If you, if you open up the gates and make it a fifteen hundred square feet, so I know I'm going off topic.
No, but so you would prefer to not even have a large.
Discuss that, I mean, do.
I would prefer to not to have a large.
Okay. Should we discuss that? Do we want to even present the large as a board?
I personally don't, I just think it defeats the purpose of what the ADU is intended to be.
I agree with you.
And then nine hundred is, I'm sorry, so nine hundred is what is required in the state, we're just going with the, what the state language is there?
Right, yeah.
I, um there may be times when there's a carriage house or something that is a thousand feet instead of nine hundred, but if we're starting with, this is what the state has defined as an ADU, then let's go with that, let's not have a large ADU, I mean, that, fifteen hundred, fifteen hundred is a house.
I, my only hesitation with that.
Yeah.
Um, I mean, I, I tend to agree with that, but I also know if you live in area E and you have two acres, and you don't have a carriage house yet, maybe you want to build one, have an apartment in it, and and, and so we are foreclosing that as an option for that part of town.
I know we have lots more regulations to plan in the future, and, and maybe just starting with the standard, which is as, you know, pretty much as the state has written it, and so there's a solid compelling case, I mean, compelling in illegal form, right? This is why we need to do it.
It's required.
There are also housing reasons to do it, but you, with the large, as soon as you open the door to the large, you get into all of that.
We'll be up to twenty-five hundred.
How many parking spaces, why, why here and not there, you know, maybe we just start with the standard.
So I disagree, nine hundred square feet is a pretty small place to live.
Yeah.
It's not going to solve our housing.
But it, because it's, it's, it's an accessory dwelling unit, it's not a dwelling unit, it's accessory to what you already have.
Sarah Melish will tell you that what she's getting for applications for people with employee, for employee housing is consistently fifteen hundred square feet and larger.
But then maybe we just keep the employee bylaw, because again, I think there's only been about two of those cases in the last ten years.
I don't think Sarah would say that, but I'm.
Well, her other cases have been not, well, fake employees.
There have been fake employees.
But, but but yeah, so I'll stay with that, but I I don't know that we write bylaws based on what people are bringing to the zoning board and wanting, right? That could be, that could be a slippery slope. The I like Laura's idea, and Gordon's, that, you know, states requiring nine hundred square feet, let's do that, we're also facing. We're also facing the MBTA overlay, which is supposed to do another size housing, um, niche. And I think that might be enough that we're getting off for three months. And just kinda see how things start going with those.
Well, we can, we, we haven't noticed for a public hearing on the town, so you can make your final. Decision about whether to.
See what folks say.
See what people say, what you think, whether you want to, like, put it off, work on it a little bit more. Whether you think this is okay for, um, if there's something else in specific you want added to this. Like, or if you're gonna do something bigger, or like, let's say. If you're gonna do a third bedroom, then you need a second thing, or if you're gonna go one, one parking space. The, until you hit twelve hundred squares, then you need a second one, you know, there, there are ways to hear it.
I guess I would like get their, uh, their Creighton's opinion on the large. So I'd like to keep the large in the mix, um, for now, but I, I understand your points and I support that too.
So can I give you the, my other edits on that then?
Yeah.
Um. With the large. I mentioned this last meeting and I don't know, well, I guess we'll just have to decide. So I would not have it in D one and D two, which is already two-family.
Um, I actually agree with that.
That's how we currently have it. Um, and then in that grid, I also don't know why she would be a yes and not a ZBA approval.
The two families are allowed by law.
But an ADU is different than a two-family.
Not. Not really, because.
An ADU can be detached, a two-family has to detach firewall.
Good point.
First, how do folks feel about excluding D one and D two, which is the denser area, area? So we'd be foreclosing a homeowner in D one, D two from having a large, basically that.
I can see the logic, but on the other hand. The large to me feels like enough of a departure that start modifying it for some districts and not others. On the one hand, you might say, I'm living in D one and I'm relieved that my neighbor's not gonna build such a big one. On the other one, on the other hand, I might say, well, I live there, I don't have any land, because I'm, my lot's so small, but I have a garage. It's a thousand, eleven hundred feet and I'd like to put an apartment on top of it, you know, for my kid who's moving home. And why can't I have it?
Or in my basement.
Or in my basement, or whatever it might be. So, I like, I can see. I think it's complicated, I see.
So, 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 one, I was taking it just because currently we don't, you know, with our current ADU, which we're gonna get rid of. But to your point, I think, again, it's a clarification that you wouldn't want, or maybe you would, but I don't know. A two-family and then an ADU, if you had a single family in D and then wanted to do an ADU perhaps. But not three.
Doesn't, doesn't somewhere else in here say if you have the, have a multifamily, you don't also have an ADU? Isn't that in the base part of this?
We're trying to, we, we want that included.
That, that's on number two of the general regulation.
But a multifamily isn't a two-family.
It says accessory dwelling units shall not be permitted on two-family and multifamily.
Where are you looking at?
On the, uh, under the standard.
The standard, okay.
The general regulations.
Yes, okay.
So. So that wouldn't allow, so if you have a legal two-family, you wouldn't be allowed to add accessory dwelling units to. And then all of a sudden you've got four units on, you can't do that.
What number?
Yeah, what number, Mark?
Um, nine point one point three, and it's number two.
Yeah.
Okay, um, okay. Um, and then I just. Um, so nine point one point two-two, um. I don't know why that wouldn't just default back to the regular one, which we just clarified with five point four and five point five.
Fifty?
Well, just that they had to meet the setbacks and lot coverage and.
Well, yeah.
The measure.
Well, they all have to comply with their first one, right?
Well, why this date is April twenty-eighth, because it's kind of meeting.
But wouldn't this just revert back to the base bylaw that already has those requirements that has to lead, lead lot? Coverage and.
May I ask a clarifying question to what you're asking? This large building upon the standards, you have everything in the standard and then.
Yeah, yeah, you have to comply with both.
I'm not reading that in the law, maybe I'm, that you, everything in the standard applies to law, so.
That's why the select board wanted it combined, part of makes you want to make that clear, I think.
Okay. Oh, they want it to be one bylaw?
Well, that's why it says, well, special permit, maybe fair reference. BBA provided the application complies with section nine point one two, it says they shall. Uh, uh, but maybe I take out nine one two. Yeah, and just say they shall comply with the regulations under nine three with the list of, so.
Then the other thing I had with that was, which we currently have, is with these large ADUs. Is owner occupancy in one of the units?
Oh, in the large, yeah, we're not permitted to have that in the standard, but. Yeah, I.
Yeah.
Why not? There a reason why not?
What, or an occupancy? Hard to regulate.
I mean, we have no enforcement, but, but if a neighbor complained, you know, that. LLC in Colorado, you know, is, has two, you know, a house and an ADU and renting out both. And while things are going on, that at least we would have in our bylaws that say, well, you know, one of these have to be owner occupied.
But it is hard to enforce, we didn't wanna add that part.
And do we really care? What terms does makeup want it?
Well, because you still want a neighborhood feel of that these aren't just rotating rentals. Um. You know, for the neighbors as well, right? Like that, that they feel that, okay, there's, you know, an ADU that's being rented out or whatever. But. Um, but then you're. That there's oversight.
Then you're gonna get into, uh, you know, I have family who live on the Antucket year round. And we're gonna, then we're gonna get into the, you know, what if a family goes to Florida for the winter? And they can't rent their ADU out, their larger ADU for a year, it just.
Well, in our current bylaw, we address that. So again, I would just copy over some of our language that says, you know, you can do minor absences. Not for more than six months at a time, or blah, 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 or, yeah, for six months or less.
I don't know, I'm thinking about it now, um. I think I would not want that requirement, but you bring it up. What others think? From the owner upside in the large, on one of the.
Since you said large, um.
Yeah, and I, you know, again, I, I'm not really backing it either, but last meeting, we had talked about putting the language in that, what we currently have. That not exceed thirty-five percent of floor area, blah, 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 and somehow that translated to half the gross floor area, fifteen hundred square feet. So I don't know where those came from, so I think we're, we made it bigger than we even wanted last meeting. Um, I would change those.
But doesn't that make them smaller?
Yeah.
It makes it smaller, if you, it can't be more than half the gross floor area of fifteen hundred square feet.
Well, I think we had talked twelve hundred square feet and, uh.
For the absolute number.
You have a couple hands up. No, no, okay.
That's wrong a lot.
So I'm sure we have a lot of houses in here that are way more than that, three thousand square feet. Three thousand square foot house would only be able to have fifteen hundred square. Half of that floor area is fifteen hundred. So if you have a four thousand square foot house or a six thousand square foot. Twelve, you know, whatever, you can still only have fifteen hundred.
So relatively, three thousand square feet. You know. Plenty, plenty, plenty of houses that are that, so. Having, you know, fifteen hundred, that's large to me as per an ADU.
Any other thoughts on that? Okay, well, you'd be RF, RF.
Yeah, yes, hi, this is Donna Ferraz, Ape Blossom Lane, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hi, good evening, guys. Um, I'm just wanna just, just a quick thing, I, I like the nine hundred square feet. Um, with an ADU, because my definition of an ADU is a very small residential space. And it, for me, I, I'm always thinking between four hundred and eight hundred square feet to accommodate one or two people. With a single-bedroom bathroom kitchen. And, you know, I lived in an apartment with my husband that was nine hundred, it was square feet. And it was huge in Chicago. My in-laws lived in an apartment in Salem, nine hundred square feet, huge. And you could even have even a child or so. When I think of fifteen hundred square feet. And if, let's say I even just added six hundred onto my apartment in Chicago, it would have been massive. We had so much space for a couple of two. I just really would be mindful of like, why were, like, why would you need a, I mean, a fifteen hundred square foot. Is a really nice-sized home, like, let's, let's be honest, like, I mean, fifteen hundred square feet is pretty big. So I just would be mindful about, I think we just start with that nine hundred square feet, let's get those ADUs under our belt. Like, let, let, let's allow the elderly, let's allow like a small family, a couple with a child, you know, a child to, to kinda get into here. Before we start really expanding to like, what would be a home, an actual fifteen hundred square foot home. So that's, I, I, I like the nine hundred square feet, I hope you guys kinda stick to that. Yet I do understand if you already have an existing structure, like a garage or even a basement. And your square footage in the basement would be a thousand or above. I guess I wouldn't mind if that just stayed the same, because the structure and kinda the footprint doesn't change. But fifteen hundred square feet to me seems pretty large. That's my comment. Thank you very much, you guys are doing a great job.
Thank you. I think that's, that, that's interesting that, you know, if there was an existing structure. That part of it wanted to be converted or the whole thing to an ADU, that's different than creating a whole new fifteen hundred square foot structure. So maybe something like that could be a special permit that, you know, you have a, an existing garage, structure, whatever. That you now wanna convert to an. Thousand-square-foot ADU, you're repurposing an existing building. Um, I guess I could see that better than a new structure.
And you'd, you'd address that particular problem at the time that it submitted.
Well, yeah, you would just tag on to the, the general ADU bylaw that, um, you know. Take some time to figure out the wording, because you wouldn't want somebody to convert a garage and then get rid of their parking spots, so. But, you know.
Do that now, I mean.
Well, yeah, and that's why, you know, I don't know, we, we shouldn't be adding to a problem that we already have.
All right, we're on, done with large, on the floodplain. They're gonna update us on the status of floodplain.
Um, floodplain is, um, pretty much, I believe it was unchanged, um, at the select board meeting.
But we're, we still have the map problem.
Right, so the map problem is in front of us that we will be all set with map, final map. By the, uh. By our meeting in March.
Oh.
It's not sooner.
So the one comment that the select board had on this was they wanted to, of Mark, have a discussion with town council. About whether or not the floodplain bylaw could be structured. In the same way as the stormwater bylaw.
Yeah, I tried to explain that the, the, this is the outline, saying what the zones are. And what the overall parameters are, but the building code is the regulation. That this applies to, because the building code dictates how you build in floodplains based on. Type of floodplain you're in, so, um, I have called the, the floodplain coordinator. To ensure that that is correct, so. They're the ones, they're the ones who are saying we have to adopt it in this format.
In that format.
That's correct, so, otherwise we're not compliant and then people can get flood insurance, so.
Yeah, this, this model bylaw is for the state, like, did they wanna change the, just the format?
They asked the question, the select board asked the question that, could they? Because apparently when they did the stormwater, the stormwater was one, one document, when the state sent it. But then they said you could split it in two, you could take out all the regulatory, uh, requirements. And make it in your local regulations and just have the format, structure as a bylaw. Um, and so they let them do that, just but in that, it's. Not sure why, I wasn't part of the whole floodplain, I mean, the stormwater discussion. So, um, so they just wanted me to check, but, um, my understanding is that.
We have to go with what the state gives.
They have to go with what the state says, I'm just confirming that that's the case, and that, yeah. Near that. The regulations, so to speak, would be the. And that is already separate.
Any comments on floodplain? I know. Okay, Bill Stone.
Hi, all, um, my comment's not about floodplains, so forgive me. Um, I just got back from the kids' vac, you know, school break and got a notice tonight about thirty Mill Street. And I was, uh, I guess it must have been covered earlier in the meeting. Uh, was there anything voted on for that?
Thirty Mill Street, maybe you have, maybe it's a different meeting.
Yes, that, is that a conservation notice?
Yes.
Oh, that's tomorrow night.
Oh, sorry, guys, okay.
It must be on a different time zone.
Thank you, thank you, sorry about that. I just got the notice and joined about a half hour after your calls, or this started, so I was waiting to see if it came up. Thanks.
I'm sorry you had to wait all night. I'm sorry you had to wait all night.
No, God, you, you guys are doing great. I sat here going, oh, they're just trying to think of all the different things that, that affect everything. So thanks for doing what you're doing.
Oh, thank you. All right, any other hands, Barry?
No.
Okay, anything, oh, um, dropping like flies. Liaison reports, any thing important to report?
I would say the downtown improvement committee is quite, uh.
Active, engaged?
Quite engaged and quite active. They're, they're rather boisterous meetings. I mean, they get to the point of like, burning torches and charging up the hill. But they're, but they, they are tremendous advocates for betterment of the town. Getting bathrooms in here, getting the commuting center up front, getting signage in the town. And, and lastly, is to kind of improve the whole retail environment to go, go down. Those discussions are really quite, quite fertile and quite active. I happen to be taking the notes one too, so I'm, so I, I get to read it, I get to hear it all over again. It's pretty, it's pretty amazing. And they, they are great advocates for, for huts too. I, I, I do hope. I've expressed this to Sarah many times, you know, I hope that we were able to them, which is also me on that side of the equation too here. Because they're, they're great. They're great. They're funny. They're passionate.
Great.
Sounds like Gar's been there.
Well, Gar, it's, it's actually Marlene Stone. She really, she's, she, she gets to the point to swear and we have to like, her to hit a list. Leave the tape. It's pretty passionate. But she's right, you know, she, she wants, she wants something that's for the betterment of town. You get lingers and lingers and lingers and nothing gets done. And she wants it. Yeah, enough, please say it.
Well, that was great. Thank you so much.
We're having, first, we have a survey done on Newport Park, which people can look at, I guess. Uh, it shows a little more difficulty in developing the part of the land, but it's still possible. Um, we're also having a survey done in the plains to see what, what the constraints we have there. Um, and we've been discussing, um, a potential, um, transaction with a current property owner in partnership with a nonprofit corporation. If we can all get that put together, that'd be great. The Powderhouse Lane Lip Application has gone into the state filing?
Yes, and it's under review and they haven't asked for any more information, which is amazing.
How many units does that be?
It would be, no, it would be the entire development because twenty-five percent, if, if reviewed and okayed, twenty-five percent of the units are already rented, um, in accordance with the requirement for.
And that's the property at the end of M?
Yes, of all twenty-nine units would, would then go on to the S.
And there are only eight there on currently?
Well, no, there's zero in a couple.
What does that do to our percentage?
Helps a little bit.
I haven't done the math, but it's not, it's not very much. But it's a good step. That's right.
Um, any other public comment on anything that we covered tonight? Not anything.
I have two topics. Um, can we give the minutes first? I didn't see any minutes.
I didn't either. Yeah, I didn't either.
If they weren't in the online packet, then they probably weren't there.
Okay, oh, Sarah Pierce, okay. And Mary.
Oh, sorry. Uh, yeah, Sarah Pierce, nine Front Street. I just wondered when would it be an appropriate time to ask to go back to the thirty and I believe thirty-four Pine Street? With the amount of lots separated or combined, what is the maximum amount of units that could be built there?
I, in my view, it depends on what, from what he poses, um, which, I mean, he goes under. He was sort of flopping back and forth between different vehicles.
The way, when we adopted that amendment on the floor at town meeting, it's, it limits it to, even if he divides it into multiple lots, the most he could do with the existing two lots. So I believe he could get five units on each of the existing two parcels, which means in thirty and thirty-four combined, he could do ten. Um, but, um, right now, he was trying to divide three single family homes in the front, three small lots and one bigger lot in the back. But it's still, even if he divided it into those four parcels, the most he could put on the properties combined would be ten units.
Okay, and so would that require two out of the ten to be affordable?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Good question, though.
You're not building five.
Okay, Mary.
Five.
Other matters. Mary's bringing up other matters.
So we did a special permit last meeting and, um, for seven central. And something was bothering me. I went home and looked on the map. Um, we approved off-street parking behind seven central. The issue is, is the, the road right behind seven central is town-owned, which is fine. But to get there is a right-of-way owned by nineteen central.